Very, uh, very detailed.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, can we give the motion? I think you all have had a chance to look at that. You're okay with it on the motion and that is actually an application for the patio license that we need to.
And just actually in general, this is more information for us, the city to keep on file, for liquor license as well.
Okay.
For restaurant and bars, so just give us a little bit more information and Eric more information as well.
Okay.
Very good. We need a motion.
Make a motion to put the patio.
Application. Motion on the floor by Gina.
I'll second that, second by Donnie, all votes in favor please, second by Miss Katie, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Do you agree now, listen? Uh, Don, what did we have for building permits out there?
Uh, we've got a couple of them, and we've got a couple of people asking questions. So we have two concrete ones, Rick Golden, uh, decided to replace, uh, some concrete and some steps. He's got a drawing in the back, so that's him there. And then, uh, a wellie on three oh six Inward Street, um, which will be on the north side of the town. Actually has gone through and did a whole bunch of concrete work there. And is planning on putting up a shed and has everything poured for it and then Jim Grooming actually stopped and said, "Do you know you need a permit?" She said, "Really?" So that's all this drawing here. The way it looks is if we can believe where she's saying, she'll be ten feet off the line for her, ten by ten one orange garage. And then she has, uh, everything in yellow is new, everything in blue has been totally replaced.
So actually there's, I think there's a new chunk right out for driveway of the garage. Whatever garage is there, yeah, there's a chunk of cement, she wanted to go through the rest of the cement that lead to the car.
Yep.
So there should, there should really be issues there, that also the only question maybe, but she's going to be not, so she's needed.
Those are the two permits that we have, so we'll be looking for a motion and second on those two, I guess.
You heard Donnie, we will need a motion on these two?
I'll make a motion for two concrete permits.
There is a, he was, uh, concrete, looks like the other one like is, uh, actual building permit application.
Along with concrete, correct?
Okay, okay. Make a motion to approve them.
Yeah, I'll, uh, my motion to, uh, we'll look at.
Okay, motion on the floor, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stephanie, all votes in favor please, second by by stating aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
So the other, the other, uh, is, is we have a citizen that would like to start a free, a free little library, it's called. And they have them all over St. Cloud apparently and.
They have, they have them all over the state, they're some up in, in Crow Wing County and.
She would like it.
Book box or?
She would, she would like it.
In Dome Town.
Do they?
No.
They have them in, in front of a couple of businesses in Little Falls, so in addition to the library, people can just drop off books that they don't want and they can take books from whoever and it's just kind of a free exchange. And the door just opens, you have public exchange of reading material.
So she came to, uh, to the planning and zoning and we do not have anything in our ordinance that that says anything about it. The one question that would fall, right, there's nothing that is there for that. The first question that we had and had, Brian is now gone and I'll talk to Brian, I'll get one in tomorrow, but was she wants to put it close to a fire iron. We said that's probably a no, because there's gotta be a certain distance away. And we don't talk to the chief and we don't know what he would say, right? And but otherwise then it would be up to the council, what the council would think about letting somebody put that in. It would be right on Main Street to be straight across from the church.
Say just looking at one.
Just one, yeah. And she has to apply to the National Registry to be able to use that name. And then anybody coming through town could go online to this thing and say, "Where's the Coles', my little library?" And hers would show up. So somebody driving through town could visit, they were staying for the night, you know what?
So my question would be, okay, she's preliminarily wanting to go across. We're actually gonna be going on private property?
It's her, it's her property, she's putting it on.
Oh, okay.
She is putting it on, so she's giving people permission to go on her property.
Okay.
What kind of a structure is she in?
They all look like this, it looks like an oversized birdhouse with a clear door on it. There were a couple up on, when we were at my aunt's at Crow Wing Lake, there were a couple there. Along the, around the lake there and I know that there's a bunch of dormitory places in the cities.
Okay.
Um, I don't think we're all.
As long as this, we look at our sign orders, we look at our little bit, everything. It's a neat concept and it wouldn't be really doing anything, it would be far enough off her, off the roadway. And if it has to be, let's say we save, uh, Brian tells me ten feet or fifteen feet from a hydrant, hydrants next to the road, so it's gonna have to be that much farther on her driveway.
Well, that was my main concern, I, I think it's a good idea, I don't have anything against it. It's just that the placement of it either has to be on some public property or
Nope, they put it.
Somebody that's, you know, gonna want it.
Typically whoever does this is volunteering and they're putting it on their own property.
So, and that's kinda good because they're going to then maintain it and, not that it, so what happens when you get too many books and then the door is open and there's books laying on the ground or what, you know, I don't know.
And I'm assuming that that lady will be maintaining it.
Right.
And, and I don't know why, I hate to say stalking it, but.
Well, would that kinda, yeah, get the first load in there or whatever and then it is like, you take one and you can leave one or you can take one or whatever.
It's, yeah, it's just a, yeah, usually, and I'm sure she probably has a number of people with tons of books that are looking for a place that can repurposed or reused tonight, you know?
So, we have that one there, uh.
So do we need to act on that as, for like? I mean, it's on private property, it is still a structure, I guess, um. We just kinda.
At this point, I, I guess.
It shouldn't require a building permit.
I don't think, I don't think, if it does require a permit, if we're gonna say that it is a permit, it would be a non.
That could be a lot.
A non, yeah, I mean, we wouldn't be charging her for a permit to do it. But she should still get the, the, the area mark, they should still call, go for one or
Yeah.
And do all of that stuff, but I guess I think.
Landing a building, we should probably go and just make sure it's not obstructing anybody's view and driving in and out of their driveways, that sort of.
We've, we've done that and then where it's at is really not gonna be any bigger than the deal, it's a matter of.
It is a far enough away from a hydrant.
The hydrant was my concern, being a nice fireman, I'm involved. But that's gotta be the chief's call and then I'll talk to Brian.
Well, we haven't had yet, I'm still looking for the person that parks that car in the wrong spot and we can run the fireworks right through the windows.
But if, if the council is okay with it, then I'll let her know, uh, other than we've gotta make sure with Brian what, what she wants is, but otherwise she can go ahead and put it on.
Yeah, as long as it's not obstructing anybody's view. So we really, do we need to make any council action or just? I guess I'm not, it doesn't technically require a building permit, you know, I, I guess I don't know what we have to.
Yes, we just, our blessing.
So FYI.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the other, the other one that I have is, is a couple of years back, we abandoned a road. And it's the north end of town on thirty nine, if the road trees, Galen's stuff, bought the farmland from Ryan Grooming. There was a road there, we abandoned that road and this, no, it's actually this one here, here's thirty nine.
Oh, okay, that's right.
And now the question has come up now, since we abandoned that road, who owns that land now?
Uh, I thought.
I thought that you were splitting it with the, with the property, we had said it was splitting it with Galen and the property owners.
At this point, this property owner is saying, but I don't own any of that or I don't think I own any of that.
I don't think it's recorded or anything.
Probably isn't recorded, but, yeah, they technically, when we gave up this, um, road right away, and it's like we did with a couple of the other ones. This property owner and this property owner were gonna be able to split the right away, because didn't you have an issue as far as getting back into his garage?
He would, he would, he would drive along here and Ryan's dad had that planted all the way along and he would knock over some of the, the field, let's say the corn, he'd knock over two rows and Ryan's dad would get upset.
Yeah.
Ryan is the one that's bringing it up. And so he said now, nobody seemed to know who owns that, who does own it?
I thought what we did, we did.
And then in the same town, and then.
I thought we did a quick claim deed with it, well, we did it with Galen and we abandoned the road, I thought we did a quick claim deed splitting it with the two, with the, with these property owners and him.
That's kinda what I recall.
We didn't.
That's what we were supposed to, we were supposed to.
So we have, so we have to see then if it's them.
Because Galen, because we split the survey with, with Galen and we did all that and then with the survey, the road was being abandoned and these property owners were gonna get that and Galen was gonna get that and I thought we were violating the quick claim deed.
So then we have to make sure we did and figure out then, is that attached to this two thousand one number?
Yep. It's more.
Because right, right now, this guy is saying, "I don't own that, I wanna know who does." So right now.
By right, Tishy, he should own it, that was the council's.
Right, it's not what we did, I thought we were doing a quick claim deed with it.
So as of. Maybe Scotty, you should check in with Galen.
But it wasn't Galen that was, we were recording it.
Call, uh, call the county.
And I remember I talked to the county about this, I don't, I don't.
If it wasn't recorded, why don't you call Tom and see if he can draft a quick claim deed, um, explain the situation. Do we all have it already? I, I got a feeling.
I was not here during that time.
I thought we did because we were gonna, we were doing the quick claim, oh, go ahead.
From what I remember, I remember that, but I don't know if it ever got officially filed and that's where I'll need time coming back.
Right, because Galen helped, Galen paid for part of the survey, we paid for part of the survey.
Well, we stayed out, we stayed out a bunch of lines, up around the shop.
Right. Exactly, and then we were gonna file that deed and, and then we had talked to those property owners, I thought.
So I'm gonna go, we need to, we need to go back in our records a couple of years back.
On Beacon, it doesn't even show the updates around the, around the shop?
Yeah, because at the same time, the shop line should have been changed with Beacon.
Yeah, Beacon shows, I guess I never looked too closely, I don't have the shop.
Just know what, what the intention was and part of the intention was.
Right.
I guess we direct you Scott to do that and.
But now somebody, now they're saying, well, who actually owns it because they wanted it something.
Well, they're supposed, they're supposed to whether the paperwork actually got filed or not.
That, that's, that's all I have to say.
Got done or filed, if the company doesn't have it, we have to assume that it didn't get done.
Then we should get it done.
Get a hold of the attorney, have them draft the proper paperwork and let's get it done. So, so we can hear it.
That's all I have, nothing else that we needed other than those things.
Okay. Uh, let's see, next item on the agenda, uh, let's go to our, uh, preliminary budget two thousand sixteen. Scott, did you have those final numbers, um, back over just before we had the other night?
Workshop?
Yeah.
So final numbers, what we discussed was twenty thousand per levy, but we didn't really read anything, so there's nothing.
Whoever wants to take the lead and talk about what is going on there?
Well, um, so on, on our end, we talked, I, I was at a senior meeting and Toby and I had talked to the seniors about the possibility of, of raising our levy and explained to them that the last couple of years of taxes have gone down, we haven't raised, but because we have expanded our, our tax base, they've actually gone down, but we haven't lowered them, they've just been going down. And then we would like to try to reclaim some of that and try to hold their taxes at the same level. So we'll be raising it a little bit, but it's not really a raise, it's just to try to keep it the same. The problem we have with all of that is some of them are talking percent and some are talking a dollar home. And to try to get the two to drive and figure out, that's what we never came up with. Um, at that point, all the seniors were in favor of us raising the levy. So their taxes would go, stay the same, but they're going up.
Levy's going up?
Yeah, the levy would go up and try to hold, so if, uh, you picked a medium house and whatever that is, theirs would stay the same, a lower house might actually still go down a little bit and a high house might actually go up by a couple of bucks, but it was to try to figure out, because nobody, if it's seven percent for Steph or for me or for Toby or anybody, is not the same. And so that's where this whole process started. Now, we threw out the, the, I don't know who did it, to start the twenty thousand dollars and that was roughly, we thought, a seven percent, if I'm not mistaken, increase. Knowing that if we could get, then if we started with that, if we could get figures back and we could look at a bunch of different properties, we would know if we could bring that number down. But without knowing where to start, that was my opinion, that was our starting point to work with and then work it from there.
And our past levies were above twelve thousand, three something, our past levy last, was it about? I'm trying to think what our last year's levy was.
Oh, that one, that would be two hundred.
Two hundred.
Yeah, I mean, but when I look at how much
Oh, the difference.
The surplus, you, you know what you're looking at, you know what I mean?
Oh, you're looking at a budget, yeah, thirteen.
The surplus is twelve thousand and you wanted your surplus to be, and you wanted the surplus to be twenty, which is where you got that twenty. That's what I, not what the levy numbers were, that's what I'm talking about. So that's what you're looking at going from, when you do, when you guys figured out the levy, you figured out what was left over and that was the twelve or thirteen thousand, then you're now moving it to the twenty. That's where you're coming up with that number, correct?
Correct.
Kind of, right, I mean, that was kinda what, because I kinda left it in the middle of the discussion, but that's kinda what the numbers we were looking at.
And the numbers that I calculated through at that twenty thousand with taking what we went down, you know, in years past, how it's been going down. Uh, we took, I had parcel numbers and it was Donnie's, myself and Steph. You know, so like Steph's would go up four to five dollars, mine was five to six dollars, Donnie was in that eight dollar and eight cent range. And that's what we're trying to get, it's a concrete number, we need a place to start, so. Yeah, and it, it is hard, I know I looked through, I looked through all those parcel ID numbers. There is so many variables that play into that amount, you have number one, uh, what's gonna actually be homesteaded this year, which is you're looking at residential, yeah, the residential versus the commercial, and the things, big difference there. Um, how many people are actually on a parcel? You know, some people may own more, more than one parcel, you know, so there's, there's a lot of things that to actually, yeah, there's a lot of variables that we're trying to figure in. So, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's tough to actually sit down and come up with an exact number, uh, for everybody. The question was, you know, can, we set this preliminary number at twenty thousand, we can always bring it down. My question is, between now setting the preliminary and then moving forward to the end of the year, can we get some concrete numbers at that? You know, raising that, you know, going with the twenty thousand dollar. Once everybody's preliminaries are in, can we go to the county assessor and can we pin down numbers and look at, you know, take parcels or whatever, you know, some comparisons from say, this last tax capacity year to what we're proposing? Would give us, in my mind, it would give us. Yeah, first of all, I think we need to let the community know why, uh, the council has talked about raising levy and, uh, and what that conversation entailed. And basically, look, what we're looking to try and do is make up some of the extra cost for a meaningful police officer that we're gonna have to try and create some of the dollars, um, for that position, so I, I think it's important to understand that everybody understands that. I guess me personally, um, I have no intention on voting for a, a twenty thousand dollar or a seven percent increase in our taxes. So I'm not gonna vote to approve the preliminary of that. When I look through our budget, we have more than enough money to run that position. I think our budget carries a lot of flex, um, a lot of wiggle room there. And, um, I know it's real easy to, you know, wanna go to the well every time we could use a drink of water. I mean, I, I, I understand that. It, it's not easy governing like this, and I mean, it's not, but it's a way I think we should, we should continue to operate. I would be okay with a little bit of an increase within our, within our budget to try and create, um, a few new tax dollars. But when I say a few, that's basically what I'm talking about is a few. I just, uh, money is there, I don't wanna look like a greedy government, trying to get, take money that we're not, uh, that we don't need, that's my feeling.
Well, I, I don't wanna be raising taxes seven percent either, I also don't look at raising the levy as, yes, I know we need to fund the police, a new full-time police position. But I've said before and I'll say it again, our taxes and raising that levy and doing some of these different things, we're not cutting budgets and doing those types of things on the backs of the employee, we have to generate money for the training of these different things. But I don't look at it just looking at, we're looking at a new full-time police officer, I don't look at it that we need to buy a rough money, I don't look at it some, you know, it all goes together, we all have day-to-day living expenses in our houses, we all have day-to-day living expenses in our government. The price of things is going up, it's skyrocketing. I think that we, as city officials, have done an excellent job, our, our department heads have done an excellent job trying to cut to the bones to keep things reasonable, to try and not raise that levy, we have not raised that levy in nine years, I believe it is. And I would like to try and stay close to that, but I also know that we have had a lot of construction. We have had an increased tax base that has allowed everybody's taxes to go down. We need to look and find a place to make them stay even, I love my taxes going down, don't get me wrong. But we need to find a way to at least keep that even and be able to keep maintaining. We're not living extravagantly, as the city government appears, I don't think we are. I think we need to look at that, I think we need to do some research and find the number that tries and keeps it at that level and not being hodish at seven percent, but not cutting us to the point where something catastrophic happens and we are now scrambling it in a hole, trying to not even make a budget, but trying to maintain the services we have even under budget. So that's where I'm at with it, I, I don't want, I don't think we need seven percent. But I do know we need to do a lot more work, so we have to be able to find some flex and we need to pick a number that we can drop down from. But not go shoot, we should have picked something else because now we can't go up. And I just don't, like I say, I, that's just my opinion on it.
Yeah, mine is just based on when I look at, when I look at the, the budget, I look, we have upcoming and when I look at our budget, I just see plenty of places that we can save money in there that we're currently not doing.
Yeah, and I guess I.
There is, there is, there is, you know, at some point in time, don't get me wrong, and that's why I'm okay with a small, with a small increase. And, uh, I think we need to generate some new dollars for this position. But, uh, yeah.
Well, and I just respectfully disagree on the fluff in the budget, that's all. I think that there's not really a lot of wiggle room, I looked at the numbers too.
Well, you need to look at them closer, because there is a lot of them that we have in our budget, so. Numbers and percentages are, you know, some people look at the numbers, that's a twenty thousand dollars. The best we can figure, it comes to seven percent. I think when you pick either the percentage or the number, taxpaying people look at one thing, how much is it gonna cost me in my backlog? And doing the research and the numbers that I ran, five, six, eight bucks, ten bucks on a, ten dollars and eighteen cents on a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home. And if we can go lower, I, I would agree to do that, I think that we need to start with a number. This is the preliminary, it's by no means set in stone yet. We, I would make a motion that we set our preliminary levy at a twenty thousand dollar increase. And I'm hoping that we can come down with that number by, by the end of the year when we have to have the final then.
Now, Donnie, can I ask you to clarify, that ten dollars and eighteen cents, that's per year, correct?
Correct. Well, even if you, that number's not correct, at least I don't believe it is, because when you take, even if you take our, everybody in the city who's got an electrical count, okay, now that's more than a property owner, so you, let's say it's six hundred forty, six hundred fifty. Let's say you take that down to five fifty or you take it to six hundred and you figure out that twenty thousand dollars amongst all of that, it still comes out to thirty five dollars for personal. Correct, but that's taking into the account the amount it has dropped over the years, because their taxes have gone down. I, I realize that, but, you know, the reason I ran for this position is started with, because I felt their taxes were too high. I still feel their taxes are too high. I do, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but our taxes are still too high and having a little more on top of too much is still too much. We finally started to see some relief in taxes and right away, city government wants to come in and snatch that up. I don't think that's right, we can operate with the money we have and that's, in my opinion, what we should do, just my opinion. But there is a motion on the floor, uh, by Mike.
Quick discussion from, I haven't heard you.
I started it.
Where are you at?
I kinda agree, it's not finished yet, it's something to be done now since we have been working for all these years. I think with all the, that made a lot of sense, I kinda agree with that.
Well, I'm just hoping, I mean, in this, by setting a preliminary, and I don't know that this motion's gonna pass, but now, I wanna do more research and, and if Scott can do it or I go into the county assessor once, everybody's got their preliminaries then. I think we should be able to get some hard numbers and some hard facts and that's where the research needs to happen. Yeah, that's, like I said, everybody got their own beliefs on how government should work and, um, I respect everybody's decisions and I respect everybody's, um, input. And, uh, yeah, we go from here and, uh. So there is a, a motion on the floor by Mike to increase, uh, the preliminary budget for two thousand, fiscal year two thousand sixteen. Give me a second. I'll second that, motion on the floor by Mike and second by Don, all votes in favor, please signify by skating, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, motion carries. What else do we have here, Treasurers reporting claims?
Tony, just one second, we gotta make, uh, so with that, we will be increasing the general content, correct, for the levy of twenty thousand?
Yeah, if that would go to the general, then it's gonna get dispersed back out into the.
Correct, and then, so we would wanna set our final budget hearing date then as of tonight. Um, and I would request that we do it, um, to this.
When's that final have to be into the table?
I'm gonna ask you to have tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
That's preliminary to final.
Final is usually the end of the year.
Well, I did, last year.
Early December, I think.
Last year we did it, I did it the first meeting in December. Um, but that puts us this year, 'cause that was around the eighth, I believe, would put us at the fourteenth this year, so then we would wanna jump back to November twenty third. That'd be the last meeting of November.
For the hearing?
For the final.
Hearing and the levy.
Correct.
Yeah, to do the hearing and then the meeting.
Correct, so we wanna put, um, so I'll do the final budget hearing date as of eleven twenty, eleven twenty-three of two thousand fifteen.
Okay.
And that would be at seven o'clock would be the hearing date.
Okay. We have the hearing right before the council meeting?
Yeah. And the final would be as of the council meeting.
The hearing would be six thirty?
No, six.
I would set that up at six o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanna set that date, so it'd be the twenty third.
I'll make that motion to.
Prove that meeting. Motion on the floor by Don, can we get a second? Second by Gina, all votes in favor, please signify by skating, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed? Carry unanimously. Linda?
Checkbook balance, balanced with the statement on August thirty first was one mil.
Checkbook balance, balanced with the statement on August thirty-first was one million, one hundred ninety-nine dollars, three hundred and eighty-eight and twenty-seven cents.
Anything else you got there?
There are no CDs for renewal.
Are, just for, oh, let's extract this report quick.
I make the motion to accept the treasurer's report.
There's a motion on the floor by Steph.
I'll second that.
Second by Mike, all those in favor? Please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried unanimously. Um, are we still looking, Linda, at, uh, doing a CD at the end of the year of the general? Is that kinda what we were talking about? Creating an. CD?
Potentially, um, we'll see what funds are available maybe in like the other center.
Okay. I know we've talked about.
Cause like, cause I've been called, we wanna have our own, all that.
Oh, that's five hundred and sixty, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
We're just wondering if we're still on track.
Now we get general.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Like we're making a lot of money.
We're getting rich on the CDs we're talking about. Uh, claims, we got some bills we need to pay folks.
Also gonna ask Scott what he had for, I think it would be our last one. Department had, please wait till the end number.
Yeah, yeah, you did and I told you I'd forget you.
That's why I told you.
I did it on purpose. Won't you?
Well, it's, there's a lot of the things we left on.
So there was one thing that was brought up, uh, upon our acceptance, um, for us to remove the shop line, um, down at, that's Bob's shop. He got his internet, so it is being sent out. Um, his line is available then? We only have one line at City Hall. Um, there's a number of people that have been here complaining about it.
Yeah.
Um, but I just thought I'd bring it up and see if, what your thoughts were on that. If we might have two lines here to make it available.
Well.
We could call a man.
Do that. Ah, yeah, well, if Scott's on a conference call or like when I was built in.
When I do the training.
When they do the training and it's all on the phone, then the phone is busy the whole time. Yeah, so.
I wanna go with the bullhorn.
No, the cans with the string, man. The cans with the string.
Yeah, the cans, okay, I'm gonna bring the string.
So what you expressed to me this week, Scott, was Bob's line was thirty-three dollars up there. And if we move it down here, we could get it for twenty-two dollars and we're guaranteed the same number and all that.
Yeah, and that way if there's any, these like hall shots, which I'm not sure, but you're not really there.
Very few.
So Bob, you were actually gonna drop your shop line, just so I got this straight, and pick up in internet line down there, right?
Correct, and it was pretty much wash.
Okay, okay, and now we're talking about adding that line.
Would we wanna move that line over here, um, as an option?
So would we be two phone numbers then?
Correct.
Okay.
It would, it would transfer over if, when there's, when there's six, four, seven, one, it would, you still call the same number, it's just that.
It would kick over at that first line.
It would kick over as soon as the second line would bring.
Okay.
It's an option.
No, I know, and I know you guys get busy and I know as just, uh, residents that are trying to get through, it's, it's frustrating. Cause I know some calls last more than thirty seconds, you know, it's just the way it is, so, no, I, you guys are okay with that, I think.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
There's no excuse for you ignoring my call, Al.
I don't.
There are a few people that express their feelings to me about the, which you know. Can't wait, can't wait for it to bite.
If you discuss with them, they might take a call sometimes and it's been busy and busy.
Well.
Before we wrap up here, there's a question, claims, you have to.
Oh, dude, we didn't have.
I just wanted to. No, is Scott done or?
Correct.
You done?
First Scott.
Sorry, Scotty.
You need to be ten people.
So you guys can see the claims if there's any questions on them.
Was there any questions on the bill?
You make a motion to pay the claims for the month?
There is a motion by Mike to pay the claims. Can you get a second? Second by Gene, all those in favor? Please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried unanimously. Uh, before everybody leaves, I just want you to know that Linda's got treats.
Did you bring the forks? You don't need a fork.
She's only got like a half dozen of them, so somebody's gonna need a knife if you're on them before, uh.
All that's in here.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for all your hard work, um, with this budget. I know it's been, uh, it's been very grueling on a lot of us. Everybody, so, thanks for all your hard work.
We can just solo right on down to.
You're passing on the staff? Yeah, but you'd wanna eat all of them. I made the motion to adjourn.
Stephanie made a motion to adjourn. Can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Don, all those in favor? Please signify by stating aye.
Aye.